All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of June 26, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B. We'll have Captain Voluntary Action Center come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to D, Presentations. Number one, Presentation of the Financial, Final Annual Comprehensive Financial Audit, ACFR, for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022. City Manager.
Thank you. At your desk tonight, you see these documents, and the principal document is that annual comprehensive financial report that the mayor referred to for our fiscal year of 2022, which ended on December 31. It's now ready for presentation to you formally. I want to thank Kerry Ditman, our Finance Director in the Finance Department, always do the omen's share of the work on preparing these documents and the related documents here that are listed in your background. Tonight, Brian LaFavor from the auditing firm of Sickich is here, and he would like to make the formal presentation to you. Brian?
Awesome. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Sickich, I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of City Council for inviting us to present some brief comments for you on the report resulting from the audit of the city, as Bill mentioned, for your year ended December 31, 2022. Within the annual comprehensive financial report, there's three sections: an introductory section, a financial section, and a statistical section. What's required for an audit of the city under Illinois compiled statutes is all contained in the financial section. The introductory and statistical section make this a comprehensive report. Furthermore, within the introductory section, there's an award that the city has received from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the highest level of financial reporting within the local government industry, and you all should be commended for this, the 29th year in a row that you've received this award. Within the financial section of the report, at the beginning of the financial section is where we give our opinion on the financial statements. In order for us to give an opinion, which is what you engaged us to do, we're required to follow two sets of standards. The auditing standards come from the AICPA, the American Institute for Certified Public Accountants, and those standards tell us the types of procedures we need to perform when we're conducting our audit. The second set of standards are the financial reporting standards from GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and GASB sets the rules for financial statements for local governments such as the city. Once we follow those two sets of standards, we can issue an opinion on the financial statements. We're pleased to present unmodified opinion, and what that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. And you wouldn't be receiving that award each and every year without that level of opinion on your financial statements, because that's the only level of opinion that GFOA allows in their program. So you should all be commended for that as well. On the fourth page of the opinion, there's reference to other standards, specifically reference to reporting on government auditing standards. Well, what's that? Well, that's reference to a separate document called the Single Audit Report, which is a compliance audit. In any, any year that the city expends more than $750,000 in expenditures of federal funds, you're required to have a separate compliance audit of those federal funds that were used. And during the, in 2022, you had $9.5 million in federal awards that were expended. We're required to test a certain percentage of those expenditures that resulted in two major programs this year: the airport programs through the Department of Transportation, and then also the funds that you expended from what you all know as ARPA, which is titled in the Single Audit COVID Dollars. Those, that made up $3.3 million of that $9.5 million expended. So in that separate report, more good news, two unmodified opinions or highest level of opinions received on your single audit. One is your compliance with laws and regulations that could have a material impact on your financial statements, and then the second is the testing of those major programs, so compliance with those major programs themselves. In addition, there were no findings or question costs related to the single audit. Once you all accept the, the reports this evening, later on in your resolution, then that single audit report actually becomes, through a process of filing with the federal government, becomes public information with all the other single audits in the country that are performed for both local governments and a lot of non-for-profits as well. The third report that I want to make reference to this evening is the TIF compliance report, so your TIF districts, you're required to have a compliance audit of your, of your TIF funds, your expenditures of TIF funds, and we also gave an unmodified opinion on your compliance with TIF laws and regulations. Just a couple of other highlights in the financial statements. The one document that, if you don't have a chance to read the entire report, I would encourage you to look at the executive summary, which is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This gives you an overview of the city's financials. It's very good information, not only for, for you all, but for your constituents. If you ever need to reference individuals to financial information about the city, this document will also be posted on your website after your acceptance this evening. The, in terms of just one key element, your, your general operating fund had revenues in excess of expenditures for the year. This tells you that you're structurally in balance based on the current revenue stream and the current expenditures, so the revenues that came in supported the services that you're providing through your general operating fund.
Which in lay terms is fiscally responsible?
Agreed, agreed. It doesn't mean that you haven't planned something different in the future, but that's what you've done, that's what you've done in, in 2022.
Appreciate you.
Exactly. Overall, you had an increase in your general fund, fund balance of $5.6 million for the year. Within the, what's called the Required Supplementary Information Section, what I would call the Pension Section, there's information related to your participation in IMRF Police Pension and Fire Pension. You're putting, they all operate a little bit differently, but you're putting in exactly what the actuary recommends each and every year, but the results for 2022 don't really look like you did what you're supposed to do, but you did. The markets just didn't do what we wanted them to do. So the market value of the assets went down, so on a market value basis, your percent funded in each of those funds went down. It doesn't mean that life is going to change significantly from a funding standpoint. You may have short-term increases based on those decreases, but take example, each and every one of your funds, the actuary smooths out the investment returns over a five-year period. So you had one bad year, it's one-fifth of the calculation. Does it have an impact? Yes, but it's not something that you need to worry about changing instantly. And furthermore, I would, if you haven't already heard from your independent actuary for your Police and Fire Pension Fund, I would encourage you all to either participate in a Police or Fire Pension Board meeting where those might occur, or if they're doing the presentation here at City Council, you'll be able to get some good answers on what they, what they expect going forward in terms of what your employer contributions will be.
For clarification, from a contribution perspective, according to what the state has mandated that the city of DeKalb needs to contribute to the Fire, Police, and Fire Pension, we met that obligation that they set forth in 2022.
That is correct. And if you look at the history, you're doing it each and every year.
Absolutely.
But this is the same story we're, we're seeing at a lot of municipalities where the funded status goes down simply because of the, the markets. Were not a good year. Now, to this point in '23, you know, a lot different story than, than what we saw in '22.
It's like your own 401K. You don't make rash decisions based off of how the market fluctuates on a annual basis.
Exactly right. These are pension funds in perpetuity, and so no rash decisions. Both Police and Fire, as you know, are now part of the consolidated funds, so those investments are managed through statewide plans, similar to how IMRF manage. They're just each three individual plans with different management for each. Those are what I'd consider to be the highlights of the report. In conclusion, the audit went smoothly and on time. This was exactly the evening that I'd anticipated presenting the audit, which is always a good thing. City staff are very professional and easy to work with. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Fantastic. Council, any questions or comments? It's kind of cut and dry, easy audit, we're in the black. Yeah, yeah. All right. We'll appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. Enjoy working with you all.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have our first one, Mike Barron Jeffrey. Mike, I just got a constant reminder, just to let you know you have three minutes to be able to speak.
Thank you. My name is Michael Barron Jeffrey. I live on Ridge Drive, about a mile from Hillcrest and Black Hawk. I'm here to ask the city to implement Goal B4 of the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan. B4, the revitalization plan calls for promoting enrollment in tenants' associations. It says oftentimes it takes the action of an organized group of tenants to make their voices heard. If organized, tenants can use collaborative, political, economic, and social pressures to overcome recurring problems. They can work together for a common goal to make their lives and living situations better. When I asked managers of complexes in AG and North how to connect with tenants' associations, I was told they do not exist, and to contact the city. So I invite you to implement Goal B4, the revitalization plan, by promoting enrollment in tenants' associations. I also asked that you mitigate the effects of the public health emergency on local tenants' associations. What do I mean? Glad you ask. Goal four identifies University Village and other tenants' associations, as well as local churches, as potential partners to help the city encourage enrollment in these associations. As I mentioned, the management of University Village said that the association does not exist. When I spoke with residents, they said management closed the community center and has yet to reopen it. One factor in the demise of these associations is the stay-at-home mandate imposed by the state and enforced by the city. This mandate effectively denied the right to assemble to the people. This and other mandates like mask mandates and social distancing inhibited the assembly of the people as well. Apparently, the University Village Tenants Association did not survive measures imposed by the city in response to the public health emergency known as COVID-19, measures that effectively denied, then inhibited, the right to assemble. I asked the city to mitigate the effects of the public health emergency by giving the people time to recover from these measures and make their voice known. Doing so is good governance, as it fosters relationships between the people who most affected by the actions of the city and the city. It is good science, as it provides a measure of reliability that is more robust than those articulated by others who have had the privilege of being heard. And finally, it provides due diligence to ensure due process, so the people who live in Annie Glidden North is protected, and in doing so, their rights are supported rather than compromised. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark Charvat, as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak, sir.
Need about 30 seconds for this portion. Southside residents would like to get an explanation as to what happened to the old KFC building that we were promised we would have a restaurant in there, as was announced at the Fourth Ward meeting last summer. The Southside still continues to be a restaurant desert. There is not one place to have dinner. And here we are, building all this business on the south side of DeKalb. Southside continues to be neglected there, so perhaps we can get an explanation as to if something else is going to go into that restaurant. Folks have been asking about the bridge work on Lucinda Avenue. Some neighbors there were asking me, of all people, I don't even live in that area, why is there nothing being done on the Lucinda Avenue Bridge? Is it still going to be completed on time? Perhaps we can get an update. Over the past few months, I haven't seen much activity. And also, I'm kind of curious what happened to our former, now former Finance Director, who, from what I hear, was a very capable individual, who abruptly left her employment with the city of DeKalb. It's rather concerning, so perhaps we can get an explanation as to what happened to Ms. Ditman, or I see an ad out in the paper or even online regarding the fact that we're hiring a new Finance Director. So, thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none. Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. We have public comment from Mr. Mark Charvat on FOIA. Okay, this one, sir, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. This sign should really face the audience, so we can actually see how much time we have.
Right there, sir, that you can see?
The FOIA report this council is provided with is somewhat incomplete, and I believe the city is hiding important FOIA determinations and findings as it relates to the public's right to information. On June 20, 2023, the Attorney General's Public Access Counselor published a nine-page determination that photos taken by DeKalb's License Plate Recognition Program cameras are subject to release under the Freedom of Information Act. On September 20 of last year, a requester who resides in DeKalb's Fifth Ward asked for copies of photos or videos captured from the city of DeKalb License Plate Reader Camera pointing south on Sycamore Road near the Kishawaki Country Club from 10:00 AM on September 28, 2022. The city of DeKalb denied his request in its entirety. A request for review was submitted to the Attorney General's Office contesting the denial, arguing that the city's previous disclosure of technical specifications and operation procedures for the LPR cameras reflects that disclosure of the responsive records would not have a negative consequence contemplated by the city's assertions. The Attorney General's Office asked the city to respond to the review and include copies of the photos taken. The city declined to provide the required photos to the Attorney General's Office. The city argued that it was not in possession of the photographs, as a third-party vendor possessed all of them. However, Freedom of Information Act mandates that records in possession of contractors who are performing a governmental function are considered records of the public body. After several other loser arguments by the city, the AG's office determined that the city of DeKalb violated FOIA in denying copies of the photographs requested. Let me summarize here. The city failed to cooperate with the Illinois Attorney General's Office and violated FOIA. This finding by the AG office was also picked up by statewide news services and published. Needless to say, it makes the city of DeKalb look very bad and violated state statute by not complying. This now marks the second time the city has been ruled against by the Attorney General's Office when it comes to LPR cameras. Last year, the city denied the release of the locations of LPR cameras when asked to do so under FOIA. The city was forced to comply under the direction of the Illinois Attorney General's Office. In addition, I should specify that the Police Department's LPR Policy, Section 406 dot 123F, states that stored ALPR data shall not be shared with or provided to any person. This needs to be revised to conform to state statute. The public has the right to access public information. Needless to say, those who value transparency in government are very disappointed with the actions of City of DeKalb officials again.
All right, moving on to Consent Agenda. So I take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as it is beautiful. Need a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Barnes?
You didn't read it.
You need to read the Consent Agenda items.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, you're right. So the Consent Agenda is number one, minutes of the regular City Council meeting of June 12, 2023. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through June 26, 2023, in the amount of $2,267,465.03. And number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, May 2023. I guess I'll call it again. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments? Now that I've read it and clarified it for everyone, none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the Consent Agenda has been approved. Moving on to number or letter H, Public Hearings. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:20. This is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER, for Program Year 29, April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023. Is there any public comment on this? Hearing none. Any discussion?
This is an informational document that's provided to the council and for the public's benefit in the background to the agenda tonight, there's an executive summary that was written of this CAPER, beware of another acronym, sorry, report, executive summary, and then the full report is also appended. Ms. Jokum is here tonight to answer any questions, ma'am.
Any questions, council, or comments? All right, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:21 PM. All right, moving on to Agenda Item I, Considerations. Number one, hang on, wait a minute. Oh, we've got public comment for considerations. Nancy Doherty? And Nancy, you have three minutes, ma'am. Okay.
My name's Nancy Doherty. I live over at First and Fisk. I am a member, and I attend Christ the Teacher Church at Newman Center. Because of the bridge being used, I get the opportunity to go down First Street, up 38, and up Normal in order to get to church. I go during the week and I go on the weekend. It is my understanding that we're gonna do a wonderful thing with Normal, or considering Normal and Lucinda, which would be fabulous, because those potholes and everything would be wonderful, and all those other things to be repaired. However, I am concerned how am I going to get to church? Because unless the bridge is finished, so I would like to know what your thoughts are on that. I've done Hillcrest to Garden. Well, Hillcrest is probably worse than Normal Street with the speed bumps and the potholes. So I'm concerned about getting to church during the week and on Sunday with reference to what you're going to do as well as on Normal and with the bridge. Thank you.
And ma'am, if you want, feel free to reach out to me. My email's posted on the website, so is my phone number. I'd love to do breakfast, coffee, anything you want, and I can deep dive into it for you with timelines that we have as far as what's available. I would be happy to do that. You gotta come back up to the mic, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I moved here two years ago, so I'm trying to get used to streets and the ways to go places and get places, so it's been a little bit awkward for me in going to that location.
Please, please reach out, and we'll discuss it all. All right, thank you. All right. Moving on, so considerations, number one, consideration of the possible alteration of normal road functions between Lincoln Highway and Lucinda Avenue. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna open this up and then ask our city engineer, Zach Gill, to provide some details, and others want to speak from the public fine, and look forward to the council's questions. As I said in the background, the, the city is planning in conjunction with the NIU and State of Illinois to, to embrace a very aggressive contract to resurface Lucinda, beginning in the spring of 2024. And that raises a question about the intersections between the Kishawaki River and Annie Glidden Road, which is the section to be resurfaced. And it also, in that, in so going, it also has raised the question about the intersection at Normal and Lucinda. We, we have a history there of, it's a signalized intersection, so lights direct people to start and stop. But when, when students were more abundantly crossing during the school year, there were, it was often the case that people were not following the lights, they were just hoping to get between the traffic and were kind of daring their way across the street. And we don't have as many students crossing anymore, but once again, we still have a bit of anarchy at that intersection. There are people crossing diagonally and so forth. So just with that, as a history in mind, conversations between our city engineer and the operating people with NIU led to the possibility of putting a roundabout in that intersection. And that roundabout, I'll let Zach fill in the details, but although those that aren't familiar with roundabouts would say, well, why? I mean, and the traffic is just gonna be recycling, and how do you, how do you get across? Well, in fact, as you can, and there's just one small exhibit in your background for tonight, but there's more detail in the deeper background that's attached to our agenda, and it points to the fact that over the last 10 or 15 years, roundabouts and their design have been considerably improved over maybe some of the early ones in our area and around the country. Actually, European engineers have been sort of the, the pathbreakers in this way, and have found ways so that the, the roundabouts are actually safer in terms of accident histories and so forth, once properly installed. So that, that was one variation of the, the normal approach, which is just, let's, let's mill it, resurface it, open it up, restripe it, and let's go. So with that in mind, then the condition of normal road from Lincoln Highway up to Lucinda then was part of the conversation, and people who have been driving that recently know that the old speed tables are in need of, if, if we wanted to keep them, they'd be in need of repair, and if we don't want to keep them, they'd have to be milled off. And, and there's that question, too. In this process of considering what might be and how this project scope might, might address other needs, rather than postponing them and deferring them to another time in uncertain future, our city engineer and, and working with our city staff and also working with NIU have conjured the idea, which is before you tonight for this consideration, and that is the possibility of doing some bold things on normal road. Basically creates that quadrangle that Northern and the city have been talking about since the late 80s, early 90s. And I have a recollection of that, and I have a recollection of the time when the speed tables were put in, because with greater students at that time crossing that pretty well-traveled corridor on a regular basis, there were a lot of very near misses, and there was quite a concern at the highest levels of, of the university and also the city that somebody's gonna get hit, and bus traffic was also on that line. So we've come a long way from there, and if we're gonna replace, if we're gonna have to repair, do we just replace, or do we think bolder? And I thank Zach Gill for, for getting us to this point where we can talk about something aggressive and see what the public thinks about it as well. And what's proposed here is that Northern becomes one-way northbound from Lincoln Highway up to a point roughly just south of the last entrance, or I guess it would be parallel with the last entrance to Davis Hall, which is on the east side, where the two libraries would shake, and I guess where the, with the overpass basically where the libraries are. And from there on, it would be the quadrangle. People can still deliver and go in and out in a circular fashion through the Davis parking lot and in and out. But then, if you wanted to go into the parking deck, you can still, obviously still do that. You get to West Locust, you can make a left and go over to Carroll Avenue, as you do now. Very little interest even now in being able to go backwards through West Locust. And two-way, maintain on Carroll Avenue. So that's, that's the round version of this. And at this point, I'd like to bring Zach Gill up to talk a little bit more in detail about, there he is, about maybe how we got to this point and why he thinks this is the best solution to a number of issues with safety.
City Engineer Gill. Thank you.
I could take one moment. Ma'am, so you could use the College Avenue Bridge, and as you cross west, you can take a right on Gilbert Way there right now?
Ma'am, when we meet, I'll walk you through it.
We'll drive.
Yeah. We, we, I got it, Zach.
The mayor can get you to me. There is a way. There is another bridge right next to the Lucinda Avenue Bridge, so. Anyways, yes, so thank you, City Manager, and this, this is a really neat time. I, I shouldn't say it to the people that set my salary, but this is the sort of stuff I do for free, you know? This is, this is really neat to, to get your hands in, in the dirt, so to speak, and work with our other agencies, with our partners, NIU. It's just, sometimes you sniff around these things and it comes up bubkis, it doesn't work. But I think we, we've got But I think we, we've got an opening here on the horizon, do something really transformational for generations to come. I think about the students that will walk across there now, one, one little smile every day, right? For years and years and years, there's no longer dodging cars, going over speed bumps. So anyways, that's kind of what motivated me. I started with Lucinda. Looking at the roundabout, that is without question is hands down the superior treatment for an intersection such as that when you're speaking about vehicular traffic. Operationally, what we call the level of service, basically your experience, your delays, your whatever will be through the roof, your, your experience there now as a driver. And then we look at some of the benefits it adds to that sort of interplay with the students. Again, we referenced, boy, you're sitting there, there's no car coming, why am I waiting for the little orange hand, you know? And roundabouts have been urbanized very successfully, and there are some really terrific treatments you can do to help not just the general pedestrian population, but particularly the ADA consideration population, particularly the visually impaired. We worked with groups from NIU on this before it was even, even got very far off my desk, and there's some neat things. I don't need to get too in the weeds, but you can do different sort of rumble strips and things that allow a visually impaired person to make their own judgment, to hear if a vehicle's coming, to hear if a vehicle's slowing down or speeding up or has come to a yield. We can give the actuated signal for them to press, right? And it will alert a beacon, which will highlight the vehicle also to stop before they even enter the traffic circle, and particularly the speeds. The roundabouts are a physical change. It's not, hate to say it, stoplights optional. You want to go through it, you're going through it. Roundabouts have a physical deterrent there with the speeder island. They are designed for a certain maximum, what we call through speed. You know, even if you think you're the Duke's Hazard, you're only going to be able to get so far going through that by the time you have to do that. And that stands at about 15, 16 miles an hour. I know I would feel a lot safer knowing that, you know, whatever over here speeding down can only get to 15, and I can make that judgment looking one direction. That's the beauty of that calming on in the middle. It's one direction, and they're coming 15 miles an hour, cross, you're safe, make another judgment. So it allows the student population to have a quicker pedestrian route and a safer one. So as we were looking at, at that and it went in, it's nice to kind of say, hey, there's, there's no rules, right? You always gotta do that for a little bit, go home and in the evening and pull out the old exhibit and say, boy, what, what can we do to get, to really push the envelope on this? And it was the idea of removing the traffic on Normal, making that bike way and pedestrian way that the university has invested in on the south side of Lucinda, make that uninterrupted for those users. And that's great, particularly for the, the crowd, the pedestrian crowd that don't have to navigate that anymore. So then it came to looking at, what are we doing? We always have to look at origin, destination, right? First thing we have to do is, is how are we going to frame this? I understand here in America, Route 66, all that, car is king. We're always going to think about the car, think about the car. Well, sometimes you have to look at where you're building and say, should the car be king? Do we have a street competing with a campus? And maybe the street shouldn't win. And look at those, and that's decisions for a community to make based on their values. So when we look at that, we do have to look at the origin, destination for the vehicles. We have the parking garage, right? That's a, that's a magnet, that's a draw. There's a way to get through that from Lincoln Highway, and if we kept that northbound one-way on Normal up through that parking garage, and then allow that circulation, which is essentially half there, Locust's already westbound, Lincoln's already eastbound one-way, you've already basically got half of the, half of the box already done. So we look at just to complement that and let people cycle around a parking garage, exit on Carroll, enter up Normal, exit on, on Carroll and complete that movement. So it's an art sometimes, not a science. There are people, I'm not sure where they ultimately are coming from, they're going to come southbound on Normal to get to that parking garage. Are they availing themselves of Annie Glidden Road further earlier in their trip and they're coming down and come over? But that seems to be the main generator. I, I don't see a lot of people saying, hey, this is the slickest way ever to get through town, come down Normal with all the students and all the speed bumps and all that. You're typically, that's more of your, your last mile, we call it. In this case, it's your last thousand feet or so of getting where you're getting. We can still get you to that without it, you know, ending, ending the, your, your trip prematurely. So those are the things we looked at, that we vetted. I vetted that obviously internally with the street department, vetted it with the police department, vetted it with NIU, vetted it with the transit department, had great discussions with Michael Nguyen-Curts and some of his staff there on things we can do that may actually improve some of those service and options. We have a Greyhound stop, we can coordinate better, we have an opportunity to build a bus stop, have it next to the parking garage, have it very near Lincoln Highway where that Greyhound can be loaded and on Lincoln Highway and, and on their trip. So, so far what we've seen is there's usually some rose-colored glasses to put on with about everything on this. And again, I would think after a, a couple of years, it'll be like it never happened, people will get accustomed to it, so. So that, that's my spiel. Again, it, there always struggles with, with change, but I think this is a really, really terrific opportunity for something transformative.
All right, stay up there if you don't mind.
Oh, absolutely.
Council, questions or comments? Alderman McAdams.
Thank you for doing your work for the city for free, on behalf of every taxpayer in the building, as well as anyone who can hear my voice, we always appreciate that. I wanted to point out that your traffic calming measures in downtown have been receiving high marks from both residents and people from out of town who come through DeKalb, and they've been very impressed with the work that you've done. So I'm assuming you'll bring that same high standard of excellence to NIU.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't just me off on a bender doing this. Obviously, this is designed by another team of engineers, licensed professional engineers, even more experienced and entranced than I do. Their job is to tell me when I'm wrong, tell me where I'm off base. It's obviously going to go through the state of Illinois, through, this has federal aid funding in it, it's going to go down to Springfield, right? And they're going to say, boy, there's a nut up in DeKalb. Probably not, they're going to look at it and say, wow, this all works, this all checks out for us. But, so just so you know, it's not just some harebrained thing, this is going to go through so much more vetting that I'm exposing this idea to, so.
Is that a verdict they've given you before? There's a nut up in DeKalb?
I'd imagine by now it's pretty well.
Sorry, Alderman Adams. No, that's okay. Oh, one of the things that I came across in my reading was a discussion of how speed tables are bad for the fire department and for the fire engines, and I'm curious if you or Chief Thomas would like to comment on that.
I can say in general, they're, they're terrible for any service we're trying to deliver, particularly when they're trying to deliver rapidly, and something like an ambulance that's not designed to try to go over those, but I'll defer to the guy who drives every day.
Is that essentially, that's essentially it then?
Yeah.
In my research, I found that the benefits of roundabouts are that they improve safety, they promote lower speeds and traffic calming, they reduce conflict points, they lead to an improved operational performance and meet a wide range of traffic conditions because they're versatile in size, shape and design. And so I don't know why anyone would be opposed to that other than the initial shock of the change. But I think I'm in favor of that. I do want to say in regards to the quadrangle, that's a fantastic idea. In 1990, my son's mother transferred from Northern Illinois University back down to Illinois State University, and one of the things that she had commented on is that she missed the quad, and, and NIU didn't have a quad. And so I think for marketing purposes, that's an outstanding idea, and it has my full support.
Thank you.
Others?
Yeah, I got a question, you know? That's my area for work, you know? So I think I know that little area better than most. So if you want to close parts of Normal, then how would like emergency vehicles be able to get access to the buildings? Because, you know, I, it just seems like that would block up traffic even more if you, if you can only go one way. So that's just kind of confusing.
Yes, so the treatment for what will be on Normal in the segment that we're talking about removing, obviously the one-way, the rest will remain paved, this will be a striping exercise and signage to make it one-way. You know, obviously emergency response vehicle can navigate that any direction they want when they're lit up, you know? The part for Normal that we're talking about, and there will be ordinances, right? We have to actually literally make an ordinance to close a street like that. It is worded to say that to still accommodate emergency and, and crucial maintenance vehicles. So we have, we're going to partner with NIU. I see that being maybe a several-year process where we want to get lined up, get the proof of concept, get our project started. But what we work with them on, and they understand there, my counterparts, what's going to be there, we'll have to be able to host those sort of vehicles making that sort of response. We can do things to disguise it so that for the general public, it doesn't appear, you know, that, that they can drive down there or would even want to, but there are materials and methods we can use that in a crucial scenario, they could enter there. If you look at Carroll, it'd probably be similar to that, right? You have your 12 to 13-foot, you know, it's pavers, right? But the great part now is because Normal's under there, when we mill that asphalt off, we still have the road bed under there. So we can put pavers on those and it can hold up to, you know, a fire engine or anything going on there. So we definitely want to accommodate that, so.
So in layman's terms, obviously, we grind the road down, remove the asphalt, and what we replace it with will be, it'll look like a sidewalk, but it'll support emergency vehicles if they need to drive on it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. At, at a relatively low cost. Again, the hard part is coring that out, putting down the rock, compacting it, it's all there for the taking. So we're really just talking about, not much different than downtown, just a crew coming out and laying down pavers is basically all we got left to do.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, so I'm just trying to visualize this. So what about the Husky buses that are already on Normal that pick up the college kids? Like, I just don't see how it's going to be a smooth transition like you're trying to make it seem like with all that stuff going on in there on top of college kids coming back to college. It's just, I don't know, maybe I'm just not getting it right, but if we're going down Normal and you want to make it a one-way, one-way, so I'm just trying to visualize the NIU Husky buses that get in my way when I'm working on top of everybody else. I'm just trying to visualize it because I, you know, listen, my wife loves roundabouts. We got to find every roundabout in every town we go to, so I'm not, you know, just saying I don't like it.
Sounds like a smart lady.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sense to me because I'm an Alderman, she's not, so. So I, I just, I mean, it just seems like, you know, hey, you're the Michael Jordan of this, I get that. But it just seems like to me right now, it just seems like it's going to be so congested with everything going on. I just don't see how you're going to be able to spread it out and make it make sense.
So we did work very closely with the, the transit department, I know, and in some of the deep background, they provided a wonderful, Husky's routes would be rerouted. My understanding of what uses Normal, we have the Greyhound, we have a third-party Greyhound bus that picks out, picks up on the east side of Home Student Center. We're going to accommodate them down by the parking garage where they'll actually have a, an area to pull off on and have a loading zone, have a shelter and all that eventually. Their goal is to get back to Lincoln Highway, so they're actually closer. They'll just, they'll come from Lincoln Highway north up Normal, they'll stop, they'll load, they'll simply go around and go south on Carroll to the light and get back on Lincoln Highway and go back about their business. And I think there were two routes of the Husky buses that were impacted. Those are, again, more of the far-flung services, they're, they're not doing their inter-campus loop, that's the same thing. They're picking up by Home Student Center, going south on Normal, Lincoln Highway, and then peeling down Lincoln Highway to, you know, they're going out to Walmart and beyond and doing some of that stuff. So they, again, can be accommodated similarly to the Greyhound where they reconfigure the route a little bit and they simply pull off at a different phase and pick people up by the parking garage and go back on their, their loop again.
Okay, so we would do that? So we would do that for like special events, the NIU, because the Home Student Center throws a lot of events over there, so we would probably, you know, do that format as well, because they always have those buses that pick up college kids, take them around the tour and things of that nature.
Yeah. If it was a special event, then Homes could still be used too. Obviously, you can pull in and they have their own bus turnaround there.
Yeah.
The, the buses can go through the roundabout. In fact, it would actually be better for them because now if they're headed eastbound, right, and they get to Lucinda, Normal, what are their choices? I mean, it's to go right, in this case, they simply go around the roundabout and head right back towards the stadium after they pick up at, at Home. So they actually have an increased opportunity there to make different directional changes in their route without having to get up onto side streets and go all the way around and do a bunch of stuff, so, yeah. Take guys some versatility. Alderman Perkins?
So as a follow-up to Alderman Walker's point, I've got concerns on EMS side of things, and if, if at a point we basically cede Normal to NIU, how do we assure that we still have the ability to get to Cole Hall in a timely manner? Because if we, if we cede it to them and we say, all right, we're going to, we can take the top off of, of the, of the road, but then at what point if they decide they want to put in light posts that prevent our EMS from getting there?
Are you specifically saying Cole Hall or just using that as an example?
I'm using that, I'm using that as an example, because, because basically I think we need to have some, some rapid access through there, and...
Yes, so that would be, there'll eventually be an IGA with us when we would vacate this over to them. Right now it's ours, we can set those terms and, and put them in perpetuity of what we want to see there. So that would be the answer to that, that once we establish that there is the capability for emergency services, it's not, oh, that looks good on Tuesday, we're going to change our mind on Friday, it's, that, that's a condition.
And I'm not implying that they would do that, but I think as, as time goes on, right, and, and they, and they grow into the space, you know, I think part of the thought of, of vacating it essentially is, is to work with NIU, to collaborate with NIU. However, there's a lot of access. You know, I was just over there today, driving through and just, just for kicks, was out for lunch and drove through and there were 10 vehicles on Normal between Lucinda and, and Lincoln Highway. So I think there's some, some additional homework and IGAs that need to be done to make it go.
Yep.
Alderman Verbic?
Yeah, I, I would say you've been at our Ward Six meetings and have heard everyone talking about Normal, so thank you for this idea, everyone that's worked on this. This is definitely an uptick in safety to many degrees, and I, I would follow up with Alderman Perkins though to say this notion of rapid response, so we'll see a lot of police especially accelerating on Normal to get to wherever that may be. So how will that affect that rapid response that Alderman Perkins was referring to, along with not just university access, but police access beyond this route to where they're going?
Yeah, and we had a meeting with the chief, it's been a while ago, Hennessy Commanders, and obviously there, there is a, it's a trade-off, there is a, there is a trade-off there. My understanding, and I'll defer to the expert, is that they can do that with their position of patrols, that someone doesn't need to get down Normal because they're already, you know, there. And we do have it at both ends, right? I don't know that much about the jurisdiction of it all and whose badge works where, but at the north end is the NIU police too. So if they need to respond to something, there is another police station, another force right there, so. But I, chief, you got anything?
Oh, I guess a lot of times people are assuming that we always respond from the PD, that wouldn't always be the case. I mean, we would already have units already on patrol in certain areas of the city already, so I think the common thought is, oh, well, you know, how do we respond from the PD and what would be the most expedited route to get there? So, but that's not always the case. Most time officers are already on patrol and like, and, you know, like Zach said, there is the NIU component already in place there, so we, we can work around this. I'll just leave it, I guess that's my easiest answer to that. Of course, and then with that increased staffing that we have, that I'll have, we'll have in place before the year's out, that's going to benefit us as well. There's other possibilities as, as far as, you know, having officers just stationed in that area so we won't feel like that it's a hindrance for us to respond from the police department. So we'll, we'll be able to work our way around this, like I said, at the end of the day, we talked to Zach and we'll, we'll be able to figure this out.
That was just some of the immediate feedback I heard when this went out to, on the agenda was from both residents and people on campus that they do see a, a number of police accelerating on Normal to get to their destination, so that's where this came from.
Yeah, I understand, yep, I understand that. It was the preferred route, to be honest with you. So however, like I said, we're not always, you know, responding from the PD, and I think that's something people have to understand. A lot of times our responses are going to be wherever we're at, and so, and with the, with the extra units, like I said, extra personnel we'll have before the year's out, that'll improve it as well.
And those officers that are responding aren't necessarily the first responders to an incident.
Correct. A lot of times it could be county, it could...
Well, it could be our guys on patrol that are already in the neighborhood.
Could be our guys on patrol, it could be, like I said, a different agency. So it would just depends, but I just don't want everyone to get the impression that we are all responding from the PD because that wouldn't be accurate. Officers are already, you know, on patrol, on calls of service in different areas of the city at all times, so.
Before Alderman Zazada, I think city manager, you just want to make a quick comment on something that was said, or?
Yeah, just, we have to remember that as it is now, Normal is not a fast-track anywhere. And the proposal that, as Zach wisely said, there's going to have to be more engineering here in detail, and you'll see cross-sections and section views and so forth, but it would be a mountable curb so that people can drive on a, on a sufficient width of, whether it's concrete or pavers or whatever it is that's sitting on that bed, straight through, frankly smoother than they can today.
Definitely.
We're not going to encourage lights and sirens through that area, it defeats the purpose of the quadrangle by encouraging people to walk into an unsafe condition, but the, the fact is that a lot more thought will go into this, and the, the point is is wise to raise and, and it's obviously been considered and will be considered in more detail. We'll bring back the drawings, which will make more sense to you when we get a little bit further down the road. The point tonight was if, unless you feel strongly we should not continue.
Right, it's considerations. Right, consideration.
We need to know, we, we need to go further, uh, or not at all. And, and what we're looking for tonight is, okay, let's go further. Uh, it's still the show-me situation, but uh, we haven't closed any street yet and so forth, but...
We'll give you that after we're done with council comments, for sure. Yeah. Alderman Zazada?
Um, I'm thrilled about this. I think it's brilliant. Uh, I think, you know, at first I didn't realize you were shutting down this whole red portion in the images you have. And then in addition to that, I think, so here's a question. So, I understand that you're saying that the northern portion of Normal Road that will not be shut down, that portion will be northbound traffic only?
Yes. So, I guess if we, if we build it up from Lincoln Highway going north, um, the intent ultimately would be Normal Road would be one-way northbound proceeding north from Lincoln Highway. Right now, it's a T-intersection, right? You can only go north. So, it would be one-way only going north. As you get to the northern extent of the parking garage, I think there's an exhibit where it kind of shows like a white circle or a gray circle.
Oh.
As you get to there, that it was...
That's where it stops. Okay.
That would then convert into the no public traffic portion and carry up to Lucinda.
You know what I thought you were saying? I thought you were referencing the portion that's north of Lucinda.
Oh, there won't be any alteration north of Lucinda.
Okay, so that's still both ways.
It'll just tie in the intersection and roundabout as it is. Yep.
Okay, now I'm clear. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Alderman, Alderman Smith?
Bill, didn't we vacate property NIU already on Normal Road years back? I seem to remember that. I think we already have dedicated...
Well, we did. We vacated Carroll, of course. Uh, Normal, um...
I think we did.
Unless there was a narrowing there.
Mike, do you, Chief, do you remember? We...
Because Carroll used to go all the way through, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But I thought we did Normal Road.
There's no vacation there. Yeah.
Any other comments? Oh, sorry, Alderman Smith. I'm not trying to cut you off.
Um, yeah, my concerns were over public safety response. Um, the speed bumps, I agree, are terrible. They're hard on buses. They're hard on fire trucks. They break axles left and right. Um, I think transit avoids the speed bumps as much as possible. So, I, I'm all for getting rid of those. Um, I think Zach, you've done a great job with your creativity in there and, and directing it. Um, and the roundabouts, like you said, I discussed, I go to Florida, there's some that are four, they're two lanes wide, two and a half lane wide. I don't know how they, people, those are interesting to transverse, but uh, this is a really...
This would be pretty vanilla as far as the roundabout. It'd be the single lane roundabout. There's a, a conceptual, very cursory conceptual of it, but it would just be a single way, single lane all the way around. So, nothing too wild.
Thank you. Alderman Larson?
I think it's a great idea. And when, you know, I went to Northern and didn't have a car, so I walked everywhere. There are tons of alleyways that are for, for deliveries. And it's like, oh, well, jeez, this connects to this, that. I think for emergency vehicles, there was way of getting police and fire closer to the buildings they need to get to without having to go down Normal. Um, I think this is a great idea. Thanks for coming up with it.
Any others? Yeah, for me, uh, one, I gotta commend you for coming up with an idea and presenting it to a bunch of peers and just letting you guys all vet it and see if it works. And in this case, obviously, it's a multi-agency cooperation on, on agreement that this is probably the best practice. Driving down Lucinda myself, uh, there's times when school's in session, it's just terrifying. I mean, there's students everywhere and they do or do not use the crosswalk. And some just assume every car is going to stop and they just come right out on the street. So, uh, being able to eliminate that, I think is phenomenal. I think it'll be safer for the students. But also, my son goes to ISU. And when you go down there, that quad is beautiful. Students are hanging out. It, it's obviously student-centric. Um, and that's really appealing. It's a, it was a neat experience as a parent going through there. And I know my son has enjoyed uh, that as well. So, this is, finally, we closed Carroll. Now, we'll close Normal. Now, NIU can have what a traditional university has, which is a quad that is student-centric. So, I, I think it's phenomenal, man. Great, great, great job. Thank you.
Yeah.
City Manager?
So, there, there is a timing issue here, of course. Uh, plans really need to be pretty hammered out, um, you know, the end of the year, first part of twenty, twenty-four. So, we can go to bid in February. What are you thinking? When are you thinking about bid in twenty-four?
Yeah, I think we're on, on target for that, that kind of April letting that IDOT has. I believe this is what we're right now.
All right. So, say April, a couple more months beyond that. But there's a lot of work to do yet. You can see, we're still talking about concepts. So, uh, you'll be seeing things come back your way here in the coming, next couple, couple months here as more definition is given to help answer some of these questions that have been raised tonight. And so, we're gonna, not gonna just go away. We're gonna think about it again after the holidays. You know, it's, we're, we're working on it. And we'll bring you it in, in pieces so that you can see. And you like that, check it. Next thing, check it. And when we're done, we'll either have a, a grand consensus or where we want.
I think we, like city staff, don't tend to drag our heels on stuff. So, uh, we'll be fully in support of moving this expeditiously along. Uh, from the comments, I'm, I'm hearing at least the majority for sure. Heads nodding. Bill, go forth. Continue on Zach. Um, it's gonna be a great project. Looking forward to seeing its progress.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to uh, number two, uh, consideration of a transit provider contract extension with TransDev Incorporated from January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for fixed route and paratransit services. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So, moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Walker. Uh, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As I say in the background, and by the way, there's a much deeper and broader background that's provided by Mike Newham Kirchen, who's our transit manager and is in the back of the room tonight and is going to be standing up there shortly. Um, but uh, our, our contract with TransDev, who's a transit provider, is expiring at the end of this year. It's not too soon to start thinking about it, either an extension or going out to bid. Uh, they proposed an extension. Uh, the purpose of this particular consideration is to look at what they've proposed and to assess where we stand in relation to that proposition. And the proposition was that uh, much before you tonight is a two-year extension. And there are, there are pages and pages here of detail about what the pricing is and the metrics are for both the paratransit, and that's, by the way, well, why Alderman Smith is, is not, is not participating in this. Uh, and then also the regular transit services. Uh, and the, and we have in our audience tonight, uh, representatives of TransDev. And uh, you gentlemen are also certainly welcome to, uh, with the council's blessing, to answer any questions the council may have. Um, we, we have in, in our detail for tonight's meeting, uh, identified uh, uh, the total trips, both uh, on the fixed route services and paratransit services. And um, uh, the, the vagaries or the ups and downs of that business, particularly during COVID and after, and the impact on, on the availability of, of drivers or persons who want to drive uh, in those services. And what we've done here previously, uh, by looking at the, the base wage for drivers to try to enhance the, the appeal of our TransDev system, our local system. Uh, and uh, ultimately, uh, there's, there's also a, a capital portion to this. The city is in a unique position. We have a, a, a contract for services, which uh, as you can see here, we're, we, we've reached a point where we've gone through a lot of difficulty and we're feeling good about that service. And uh, but we don't own the buses, which is pretty unusual for a municipal bus service. Uh, and so, we're uh, in, in a position where if we're negotiating an extension, we have to look at what our cost, possible cost would be if we decided not to extend with the current contractor. Uh, we're going to have to lease or buy a lot of buses. So, that's, that's an ingredient here. Uh, what's before you tonight, uh, in talking with Mike and, and with others, uh, I've, I've recommended to you for the two-year extension because we feel it gives us some time to, to uh, build up the system. Of course, we're, are on the cusp of beginning the, oh, well, we've already begun the process. Council's approved, uh, the start of the new transit center. And that is going to play into this over time as well. Uh, and hopefully, as we go forward, many of the buses that will be housed in that transit center will be owned by the city. Maybe not all, but many of them. So, uh, at, at this point, I'm going to pause. I'm going to yield to Mike. Uh, if you've got some things you'd like to add in, in more detail, I'd be happy to hear them.
Mr. Newham Kirchen, welcome.
Thank you, City Manager. And um, I mean, I think you actually did a great job of just encapsulating what, what the issue is. But uh, um, this really is a story about the way the system was built. And it's a story about operational funding versus capital funding. Um, back in twenty nineteen, the city, NIU, came to uh, a decision that they wanted to create a citywide transit system that was not just local community transit over here, NIU Husky line over here, but um, you know, use the available funding that was available for uh, providing public transit that was being significantly underutilized in order to build a transit system that, you know, our citizens can use. And that has been very successful. I mean, our first year of doing this was uh, twenty nineteen, gave a million rides, um, you know, on their fixed route system. Uh, obviously, COVID came in, changed the picture. Um, you know, but we've been rebounding. And this year, we're estimating we'll probably end up around seven hundred fifty thousand rides, which is very significant. So, um, that has been, you know, wonderful to see. And it's been the work of TransDev to deliver those rides. So, we're thankful for that partnership. Um, coming down to the contract and this proposal, you'll, we'll look. And I mean, believe me, when I was uh, working with TransDev staff, I think that, you know, they could see that I was doing a Nikita Khrushchev thing, pulling off my shoe, banging on the table. But uh, you know, we obviously want to see, you know, a price that's going to be fair to, you know, our system. Um, but there's several factors that come into play. Capital costs have gone up significantly. Just uh, the cost on parts, uh, you know, vehicles, uh, it just, it's, it's, it's shocking. I think the word that Bill used in, in his background, but it's true. It's just, we've seen some significant increases in those, those elements. So, TransDev, in the position that they're in, they're absorbing those costs as part of that contract. Um, one of the things that we've done over the last few years is when the system was built up, we had significant operational funding, not a large amount of capital funding, which meant that operationally, we were paying for capital costs that TransDev was paying for. Um, because we had no money outright to buy buses, um, to, you know, buy software, those types of things. It has to do with uh, the difference between capital funding, operational funding, the, the requirements on how those get spent. Um, so, really, the focus this last year has been finding those resources that we can now capitalize the system with, that we can pull away some of those operational costs that we're paying TransDev for, um, and absorb those into some capital grants. Uh, so, purchasing the vehicles is a good example of that. Uh, some of those maintenance costs with like large engine overhauls, those types of things, we would look at absorbing through some capital funds that we've applied for and are receiving. Um, software uh, uh, uses, say, uh, that some of the tracking software that uh, TransDev is using, um, to run the system, uh, they're paying for, that is absorbed in their hourly and monthly rate. Um, those are costs that what we would do then is absorb those into some of those capital funds. Uh, we were awarded five million dollars in state funding. There's an application we were applying for last year. And uh, that will go towards the purchase of new buses, software, that type of thing. We're just waiting for those contracts to come through from IDOT and when that comes through. Then I'll be able to talk more on what we're doing with that. The other element, though, is that as ridership increased, um, it allowed us as a city to capture more federal funds. So, when we started this program back in twenty nineteen, our federal allocation or award was typically about one point two million a year. Um, because of the increased ridership, the FTA will award a certain, they're, they're called stick funds. I can go into lots of detail. It's small transit in terms of cities and it's, you know, based on certain formulas and all that. But, long story short is, the FTA does give a bonus for certain categories for uh, the amount of riderships that, that we're providing. Because of that transit consolidation, because we're providing more rides, our uh, federal funding is looking more like three million dollars a year. We can take a portion of that then and apply that towards federal, uh, I'm sorry, towards capital funds, which allows us to do things like maybe purchase a bus fleet, add more software, that type of thing. So, the long story short is, is that the idea is to leverage those capital costs, absorb those costs into the city, um, through, again, capital grants, pull it off the operational cost of that grant. And I, I know I'm going all over the place here, but I hope you, kind of what I'm seeing is that, you know, like, what they're proposing is, while it may look like a lot, what we're trying to do is put those pieces into place to lower the operational costs. And I'm sorry, Alderman Perkins?
You good?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
So, the backup here...
Yes, sir.
Is voluminous.
Yes.
I, I, I took three cracks at it to finally get my head around it. Now, I think my, my question could be a simple one.
Okay.
The simple one, this isn't going to cost the taxpayers of DeKalb anything.
That's correct.
It's all, it's all going to be funded through federal and state grants.
Yep, and the NIU contributions.
And essentially, left pocket, right pocket.
Yep.
Stuff and, and accounting things. So, that's my key point, is it's not going to cost a taxpayer anything. We're going to be, we're going to have some capital. We're going to own our own buses at the end of the day.
Yep.
And the rest of it is, I hate to say, just checking the box, but a lot of it kind of is, right?
Yep.
From, to the layperson.
No, and that's exactly the way, the way to say it. I am a technocrat, so I tend to get into a lot of these things. I get excited about it. But that's bottom line.
Would you like an in-depth analysis of how all the funding is?
I, you know what? I, I tried. I took a crack at it, like I said, three times. I was reading over this stuff.
Am I joking? But we greatly appreciate.
No, no, no. Hey, someone's got to know it.
It took some coffee and a lot of different types of beverage to digest it.
Well, you know what? I felt the same way writing it, so.
But thank you for the detail, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Verbeck?
It, I look forward to that, that process. I think, uh, in addition to the challenge, certainly of purchasing buses and maintaining them and whatnot, it's that labor component. It's uh, what, what will that look like long-term? And, you know, we've uh, recently recognized some staffing challenges. And uh, I would look forward to hearing about how uh, we feel that that type of growth in operation gets staffed up.
Well, I mean, if we, I certainly can invite TransDev up here to speak to that. But what I will say is, those moves that we've made over the last two years as a city council to increase the rages for the drivers, back in twenty fourteen, that contract was at fourteen dollars an hour, I'm sorry, twenty, uh, twenty eighteen was at fourteen dollars an hour. Obviously, we're well past that point. So, the actions that we've taken, I mean, I can say TransDev had the best uh, spring service level or best service level this last spring semester that they've had since COVID because that new wage rate came into play and they were competitive. And it looks like that's continuing, correct?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Alderman Walker?
Hey, I know everybody gives Michael Jordan, Zach, a lot of credit for some of the jobs that he does. But, you know, uh, since I got to meet you when I went on a tour, you know, I've, and you live in my ward, so I've been a little nosy.
Yep, walking down the street.
I've been a little nosy about your job. And, you know, for you to come up here and just give the information that I did my homework on.
Thank you.
It shows me that, you know, you are doing a good job. So, I just want to give you your flowers on that.
Thank you. It's all about logistics.
Uh, City Manager?
So, uh, we're at that point like we were with the Normal Road discussion. Uh, this is not an, an action item, but...
Consideration.
We'd like to, because of the, the, the fact that at the end of the year, our, our contract uh, is up, we wanted to, if you're agreeable, we'll bring back an enabling resolution that would uh, commit the city to the two-year extension. And we'll bring that back at one of the next meetings.
From what I'm hearing, I think you're going to head and cross the room. Awesome. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item J, resolutions, which we do vote on. Um, number one, resolution two zero two-three dash zero six-six, receiving and filing the FY twenty twenty-two Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, Single Audit Report, Report on Compliance with Public Act eighty-five dash eleven forty-two, TIF report, Downstate Operating Assistance Certification and Independent Auditors Reports, Illinois Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, Consolidated Year-End Financial Report, uh, what do you call that? CAFER?
Safer.
Safer. And Management Letter. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So, moved, second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbeck, City Manager?
By approving this resolution, you, the corporate authorities, uh, receive, file, and approve that annual... approve that annual comprehensive financial report was described to you earlier and the other reports that you read in your reading of the title, Mayor. And we recommend that the filing of these is to be done by the end of this week.
No pressure.
Brian LaFever's gone. I think he'd like to know if you have another opinion, but I'll stall, and we'll have to bring him back here. I think our financial statements, we were given a clean audit again. Financial statements are in good order. The city's finances are in good order. We recommend approval.
Any comments or questions, Council? Hearing none. Again, great job, city staff on just dotting every i, crossing every d. You guys did amazing last year. And it's nice to have a third-party independent body come in and put their stamp of approval on it as well. All right, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2023-066 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, we have none for second reading. Agenda item L, ordinances, first reading, number one, ordinance 2023-024, approving a plat of dedication for the Gerler Road right-of-way from Midland Trust Company, PIN 0834300-063 and PIN 0834300-064. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager.
Thank you. This is a rather technical action item. You've been anywhere in the vicinity of First and Gerler on the south side, southwest side of the city, you'll see there's obviously work being done on creating a solar farm down there. It's well along. The person whose property abuts Gerler wants confirmation that the, through a plat, that there is a width of 50 feet from the private property line that that person owns to the Gerler Road center line. This clears up some older documents, and it's appropriate that we would approve this and move forward. And then Mr. Planey, who is the owner, will be able to move forward as well.
So this could eliminate a potential spite strip in the future, is what I'm feeling? All right. Hearing no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-024 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-024. Moving on to number two, we do have public comment from Dwayne Brown. And this is in regards to ordinance 2023-025. Dwayne, you know I'm going to say it, you have three minutes, sir.
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. A craft grower license fee in Illinois is $40,000 annually. There are also transporter licenses and infuser licenses. Since 2021, Illinois has issued 88 craft grower licenses, 54 infuser licenses, and 189 transporter licenses, and approved 10 community colleges to participate in college training pilot programs. Craft cannabis refers to superior quality cannabis produced in small batches. Growing methods in craft cannabis utilize minimal natural resources, making this type of cultivation environmentally friendly. Careful cultivation techniques, including hand harvesting, distinguish craft cannabis from ordinary cannabis cultivated in large-scale operations. Craft cannabis refers to an array of benefits, offers an array of benefits in terms of the economy, the environment, and your health. Craft growers benefit communities in many ways, including jobs, additional property taxes and sales taxes, tax sustainability, quality, and future industrial development. Illinois has seen a 50% increase in total tax revenue from cannabis from 297.7 million in 2021 to 445.3 million in 2022. Cannabis cultivation can bring local counties significant revenues. Lease prices for dispensaries and cultivation facilities can be 50 to 75% greater than the market average. Cannabis legalization has improved public safety by increasing police effectiveness. The police have been freed from having to enforce cannabis prohibition and devote more resources to more serious crimes. With a population of 14,000, Bangor Township in Michigan had the most retail cannabis dispensaries in the state, 10. They received over 280,000 from excise taxes and more than 200,000 from annual permit fees. In 2024, Adelanto, California, was in debt $2.4 million. Forty percent of the population lived below the poverty line. A year later, the first cultivation site was built. The deficit is now half a million, and the mayor expects millions of dollars of tax revenue from cannabis to be generated. Rutgers Associate Professor Michael Hayes concluded.
We're at the three, Dwayne.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Hey, if you want to send a copy to Council, we'd always appreciate it. Your research is great. All right, moving on, so we have agenda item two, ordinance 2023-025, amending Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, to add adult-use cannabis craft grower as a special use in the LI Light Industrial and HI Heavy Industrial Districts and other associated miscellaneous amendments. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll just do move by Alderwoman Zazada and seconded by Alderman McAdams, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
City Manager.
I guess first, I should say that I should have talked to Mr. Brown before I wrote this background. Obviously, I've done a lot more research and is much more expert in this matter, but just by way of a little bit of background, it was back in November of 2019 that the city council had a pretty hearty discussion, and the community was very much involved in whether we should amend our codes and ordinances to accommodate medical and recreational cannabis dispensaries. The council determined that was in the best interest of the public and approved the cannabis dispensaries. At the time, there was conversation about craft growers and transporters and other types of delivery systems, and the council wanted to, let's see what the experiences of other communities in Illinois and then make a decision. Well, some time has passed. We, as Mr. Brown outlined, we have a lot more experience with what the craft growers do. It's a highly regulated, very, very safe type of handling of the product that ultimately gets for sale in, through the dispensaries. In fact, dispensaries are happy to know that there are craft growers in the area, and craft growers can provide to local dispensaries if they're within 15 miles. And in this case, that's what we're talking about. We're also talking about some limitations through our Unified Development Ordinance, which is our development code, to have these allowed by special use in a light industrial or industrial zone, because there is manufacturing going on, packaging, and so forth. So there is an ordinance before you which defines basically, according to what the state parameters are, we can't be less regulatory, we can't, we could be more. And the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their last regular meeting in detail. The details are, by the way, spelled out at some length in your background. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of them, as to place and so forth. But the P&amp;Z Commission recommended unanimously, including the vote of someone who voted against the dispensaries but thought, you know, here they are, and it's a pretty good idea considering what we have and we've established, and the safety record seems to be good in other parts of the state. So we support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Council, Alderman McAdams.
So some topics are more fun to research than others, and this one's fantastically fun to research. I want to thank Alderman Brown for doing all of the background. You've literally covered all the, yes. And I've been researching this myself because I think that's a business opportunity, and we have a long history of agriculture in this county, and I think this is right along the same lines. So it'd be nice that we could have local crafters and local product. I strongly support the ordinance.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Verbic.
I also support this. Read in the discussions with Sycamore recently that they had worked out a revenue-sharing agreement for police and fire. Is that, would that be the same here with this company that is pursuing this?
The state has, does take some of its revenue, as you know, from our conversation some years ago, and puts that into training programs for law enforcement. We don't have that included here. I mean, the, this is a manufacturing type of operation. The dispensary creates the sales tax, which then the city gets a portion of, according to the terms that you approved some years ago. So that's where we are.
It had just been reported that they had offered Sycamore a revenue-sharing agreement for police and fire.
Well, we don't have, we don't have a vendor here, so we're just saying, here's the roadmap, here are the rules of the road. And if somebody comes in and says, boy, I really want to work with this city, and I'll do this, that's another thing. We're not in conversation with somebody about that.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Excellent. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-025 passes on first reading. I take a motion to waive second reading.
Motion to waive second reading. Second, approve.
It was moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-025. All right, moving on to number three, I have to accuse myself of that since I am in the TIF district, so Alderman Verbic will go ahead and call for the two public comments that we have, and then be running the discussion around that particular ordinance. Thank you, Alderman Verbic.
Okay, first public comment is Jennifer Bodie. Please step to the podium, and as the mayor reminds us, three minutes, please.
First of all, yeah, my name is Jennifer Bodie, and thank you for letting me speak, having the opportunity. I was raised in Sycamore, and I raised my kids in Sycamore, but I've always worked in DeKalb. My entire career has always been here. I've owned and operated a hair salon for over 22 years here in DeKalb. Back in 2001, I jumped at the opportunity to become self-employed. I found 134 South Second Street, and as you all know, that's the old barbed wire factory that we are talking about, and I built my location there. I did outgrow that location, and I ended up moving over to the Junction Plaza, and I worked there for over 20 years in that location. Unfortunately, in 2019, my stylist and I were hit really hard with COVID. I ended up losing stylists and having a space that was too big. So we were unemployed for a while, and we were deemed unessential, which is unfortunate. Thankfully, I was able to keep the salon open. It was never the same after that, though. The first part of 2022, I took a drive down Second Street, and on a whim, I called my old landlord. We worked together, and we physically and financially put my space back together. I love my new space. I do. I'm back home. It feels good. I love being in the downtown area. Our clients love it. The renovations, we love. It just feels good. I feel as if we have an abundance of parking. I've never had an issue. I've got an older clientele that can pull right up, come right in. I don't think I'm going to find that. I don't think I'm going to find what I'm paying for right now anywhere else. It could break me, which is unfortunate. Again, I love being downtown DeKalb. I'm proud of it, and I want to stay. I am in fear of finding an affordable space, which allows me and all my clients and my stylists to be able to stay. I talked to Mr. Nicholas before starting, and McAdams, that you guys are willing to help me with First and Last. I put $17,000 of my own hard-earned money into this building, and to have you guys just go and destroy it, it breaks my heart. I just hope that you will consider not destroying the building. All right. Thank you for listening, and let me share my story.
Thank you. Next is Dan Sears for public comment. Again, Dan, reminder, three minutes, please.
My name's Dan Sears. I own DNJ Properties. I'm the owner of 128 through 140 South Second Street. Thank you. I was informed that you were considering this measure tonight, kind of late in the game. This process has been going on since January. And to be honest with you, it's been met with nothing but threats and intimidation. So to find out that the opinion of what's written here in the agenda was to suggest that we were not negotiating in good faith was disturbing. So I read the agenda for tonight's meeting, and my talking points were really to talk about exactly what Jennifer talked about. Suggestion that the building is underperforming. I need no more testimony than that. To suggest that it has not been occupied. I'm tenant-centric. One of my tenants rented too much space for me. I made him downsize because it was a poor business move, and it could have cost them his business. Our original reason for buying the building was a shop. We had 13 buildings. We needed a shop. We needed a place to store furniture, appliances, to have a wood shop to repair things. The building came up, it was 10 minutes from all of our buildings. Perfect location. So I deny wholeheartedly that it's underperforming. Opportunities and chances to fix up the building have been met with resistance. We applied for an architectural grant, it was denied. We did plans to put apartments upstairs, it was met with resistance from the city. And the last part of the agenda speaks to that there was an appraisal done, and that we refused or denied occupancy or access to the appraisal is flat-out wrong. We were never contacted by the appraiser. I was out of town, my brother was in town. We were never asked. So the thing that I've asked most recently in the negotiations is that we delay this process. To suggest that you're going to go to eminent domain and ignore the data that we've given in negotiations is disturbing that I find myself at this point. I'm up here saying, don't vote. at this point. I'm up here saying, don't vote to destroy that building and take it away from me. I tried to negotiate in good faith, but no one's responded to any of our data, any of the things we've presented. So I would ask that you delay your decision for as long as you can and give us an opportunity to finish negotiations.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for your time.
Before us is ordinance 2023-026 authorizing the acquisition through condemnation of fee simple title to the property located at 128 through 140 South Second Street, PIN 0823183013. May we have a motion?
Sound moved.
Second.
City manager Nicholas.
Thank you. I listened to the presentations. I'm sympathetic to Mrs. Bodie. I have to disagree with what Mr. Sears said. I think it makes for a compelling story, facts or otherwise. And I'm going to identify for you some of the facts. I have a record, a fairly long record of contacts we've had between the city and D and J Properties. And the first contact was made by me to invite a conversation about the possibility of buying the property. And that was done in the first full week of January. We had one conversation face-to-face. Two Sears brothers were there. It was in a real estate office in the city of DeKalb. No attorneys were present. But I opened it up, and the conversation was fairly brief. I offered to have further conversation about the value of the property, but I said, we're in a position as a public body where we can't really make an offer to buy a property without a fair statement of what the value of the property is. And I don't claim to be an appraiser, and so I suggested the possibility of an appraisal. That was denied. It was rejected. Without going into detail in that conversation, the next day, I heard from the attorney on behalf of D and J Properties. And the record of all that is available to any FOIA request that is forthcoming. So there's been communication between the local attorney for D and J Properties and the city attorney since then. We made some offers. All the offers have been rejected, including the offer that was last proposed about a week or 10 days ago. And certainly, D and J Properties and the principals were aware that this was going to come to you for a public discussion unless there was some true negotiation to count on. There hasn't been negotiation. We proposed a number of different prices, and they've just been rejected. So here's where we are. The purpose of our interest is to find some close-in parking, particularly to serve that block between Second and Third, which is the hottest hospitality block that we have in the downtown right now. Some new restaurants, some others that are possibly going to open. And parking, as we've talked about many times in this room, is available around the downtown, in the heart of the downtown, more limited, and particularly depending on the time of the day. In the evening hospitality time, the prime time, from about 4:00, 4:30 until about midnight, it has a, most nights from Monday through Saturday night, not so much on Sunday night, it has a reputation in our town, anybody who's been in the downtown, of being very precious. People parole the close-in parking areas in Van Buren Plaza, behind the city hall, and also south of the tracks on Second Street on a regular basis. And I'm a regular witness to that, but I'm not alone. Talked to people every day in the downtown area, and I'm asked by businesses, which include restaurants but not exclusively restaurants, what are we going to do about the parking? And so this footprint, it's an 18,000-square-foot building. So it wasn't unkind for me to say it's underserved. There is one tenant there, but you don't have 18,000 square feet, not even close to that. It's underserving when the cost of the mortgage and the insurance and other costs are not being offset by the income. So that was not meant to be harsh. It was just meant to be factual. So here we are tonight. I'm not happy to be talking about eminent domain. Back in January 7th, one of the partners said, well, you just want to seize us from us. No, I want to know what a fair market value would be for this. And so we've been frustrated consistently in finding out what we can do. And what we have to do is to get inside with somebody who is certified as an appraiser. We would consider an appraisal from the owners, and we can look at that, and we can assess whether that is a true statement of the income. We could have battling appraisers, which we did with Hunter Properties, as you may recall. And then ultimately, those two appraisers hired a third, which we all agreed to accept the price from. So the process can go on, but we're tired of no cooperation. It's been over six months since we started the process. And so we are asking you tonight to initiate a process during which we can continue to negotiate or start to negotiate. There hasn't been a negotiation because we haven't been able to get the other party to the table. So that's where we are. It's not the cruel city trying to muscle up here. The city's been solicitous, and we've been asking about it off and on through our attorneys for over six months. That's where we are.
Thank you, city manager. Alderman McAdams. I'd like to ask Mr. Sears to return back to the podium for a few questions. While you're walking, I'll say, I am personally opposed to the idea of eminent domain. I know it's politically unpopular. I know it's generally unpopular, and I appreciate that you've come before us to discuss the matter. The appraised property market value of $243, $243,000, we made a good-faith offer of $275,000 plus the city's assumption of the property owner's customary closing costs. Do you not find that to be a fair offer?
No, I do not.
Okay. What do you think is a fair offer?
We started the process at $495,000. And how I came to that value was, as a property owner, I do have mortgages and debt.
Sure.
And again, at the time of the purchase, I had 13 buildings. I'm getting older, trying to retire, so I'm selling them off a little bit at a time, fixing them up as I go. This has been a shop for me. When I had a tenant, it was a bonus. I have a wonderful tenant now. So for five years, the last five years, I have been providing a personal financial statement to my bank, and I have been projecting a value of $595,000. So my first good-faith offer to the city was $495,000.
I recall. Would you be willing to pay for an appraisal and open up the building to your own appraiser?
We already initiated that through correspondence with the city.
Okay. But do you disagree with the market value that they came up with at $243,000?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the $17,000 that Ms. Bodie had invested in your business, is that still, was that already paid? Did she already have a contract with you? What are the terms of that contract?
That was her own money that she invested in the space. I believe we matched it with, on a low estimate, I'd say $13,000, $13,500. There's no contract between, those were just contributions we made to improve the space.
Okay, so that money's gone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then money's been spent. Okay, that's my only question. Thank you. Alderman Walker.
All right, I got to ask Matt Rose, city. I'm new to this, so I definitely need to understand a lot more, just for Ms. Bodie's part. So, I mean, I'm no attorney, so please, that may be a stupid question. Bear with me. But let's say all this does go through, which I'm not in favor for as of right now. So if the building gets into eminent domain or whatever the case may be, condemnation, action, whatever the case may be, would the city be reliable to give her her money that she put into a building that wasn't hers? Or could the city do a good-faith measure and give her the money that she put forth this? Because it seems like she got crossed in the middle, and that's not right. So I want to know how that works.
So the first is that if this went to an eminent domain action, she would be entitled to relocation expenses and to the fair market value of the leasehold interest in the property. That would be part of what the city, so what an eminent domain action would require the city to do is to pay the fair market value of the property, and there'd be a determination of what that fair market value of the property would be by a court of law, right? So we're not, you know, an eminent domain doesn't quote-unquote steal anybody's property out from them. It's paying them fair market value. Now, the thing for all of you to understand too on top of that is that if you were to approve the action tonight, you're not saying that we should go ahead and file the eminent domain action. You are giving us authority to do so, but what is more important, and what we would like to do, is that we would like to voluntarily acquire the property through negotiations. We've been trying to do that, obviously, that's been spelled out. Having the authority to resort to eminent domain, you need to approve that in order for us to do that. But having that ability to do that strengthens our hand to voluntarily acquire it through voluntary negotiations. And as part of those voluntary negotiations, we can directly negotiate with the tenant too.
So in other words, like, that sounds like we're jumping around. I just want to know, like, straight up, if the building was taken or whatever you just said, would she get her money back? Or would she, because this, here's my thing. Here's my thing. She didn't know what was going on when she did this, I guess. I didn't know. I'm a new alderman. But for her to lose everything that she had because of this situation, to me, doesn't feel right. It's just not right.
Yeah.
So I just want to know legally, like...
Yeah, I can only answer it by answering the question again. I'm sorry, but to explain it, to explain it to you so that you understand it, just let me, give me a moment.
I just want it a different way. I mean, I'm not an attorney, so I don't, you know, I don't got all the knowledge you have.
I get it.
I just want, so we all understand here. That's what I want.
I get it. So let's assume, you know, that she put in, what she said that she put in, right, which was 13 or 15 or 17, right? And the landlord added 13, so it was $30,000 improvements. Let's assume, one would think that if you put $30,000 into it, that the fair market value at a bare minimum would be $30,000, right? Now, I would hope that it's more than that, right? There's going to be some other evidence of what the fair market value of her leasehold interest is, such as the rent that she's paying, right? I would assume, then, that that would, that what she put in, unless the property is worth nothing, right, and her leasehold interest is worth nothing, that she would be able to recoup her investment through an eminent domain action.
You all set? Alderman Walker?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Alderman Perkins?
So I'm hearing mixed things here, you know? And cutting right to the chase, is it accurate to say that both parties are now negotiating in good faith?
I believe I am.
So I guess if that's, and I'm not saying I disagree with you.
That's okay.
But what's the next step for you in the appraisal process, and when?
The appraisal's been ordered. I asked the city to give me 45 days to get it because from the day they had theirs done, it took 45 days for me to get it. Once I have that, I'll have another opinion of the building's worth.
Sure.
I shared my opinion of how I came to the value. I also had a certified market analysis done by a local agent. To me, I have to rely on my team. We talked, the gentleman with all the road stuff, he has a team. I don't just wildly pick these values. And remember, when the city came to me, this building was not for sale. Our agreement started a year and a half ago. I had no intention of selling this building. But in my first meeting, I was told if I didn't come to an agreement, the city would use every legal remedy to take it.
And I don't like, I don't like the eminent domain thing, to be clear.
I'm sure you can tell I don't either.
You know, and I can, I can't imagine if I were in your spot. But I think the, I think the goal is to get both parties at the table to negotiate in some degree of good faith. And if, and I guess eminent domain is, at least in this context, our approval of eminent domain would ensure both parties were at the table, right? Not necessarily optionally if one decides not to. This action today would say, all right, we need to get to...
It does, and a judge will then be faced with having to say, I think we have enough information here to arrive at a fair estimated value, or may say, well, we've got competing appraisals, and so what do the parties think is a fair way to resolve that? And then ultimately, a judge would rule on what might be fair.
So, yeah, so good-faith negotiations has a legal definition, right? And that is a term of legal art, right? And what that means is that you have to negotiate around what the fair market value of the property is. Now, there's actual evidence of what fair market value of the property is. For example, Mr. Sears cited that he had a private market analysis. That has never been shared with the city. If that supported his belief of what, you know, that $500,000 was the fair market value of the property, then that would be something that would be considered in good-faith negotiation. But by law, for example, if there is an appraised value by a licensed appraiser, and we've made an offer that is in excess of that appraised value of what that fair market value is, that is by definition a good-faith negotiation and a good-faith offer.
You all set? Alderman Perkins?
I may loop back.
Okay. Alderman McAdams.
I'm still thinking.
And then Alderman Larson.
I want to listen a little more, but I'm still thinking.
I'd like to make a motion to table the issue for at least one meeting, if not two, to get more information and to allow for additional negotiations.
Alderman McAdams with a motion to postpone this discussion. A second with Alderman Walker.
Before you vote on it, may I just comment on one thing?
Alderman Perkins first, and then we'll move on to Attorney Rose.
So to do that, I guess what I would like to see is, I would like to start, I would like to see what's going to be delivered to who and by when, you know? Because I see both sides saying this and that, and I'm hearing, if you have your information, and they're saying we don't have it, then just send it over to them so we can have it and we can talk, you know?
I received an email from my attorney suggesting that they did have it, so that's the first I'm hearing of it. As well, when these negotiations started, I did a deep dive into everything that's sold in the Central Business District. Most notably, after it was disclosed to me that they were going to tear it down for parking, I'm sure you all know this, my building faces west. So what I can see is where the old Matthew Boone building used to be. That was purchased and tore down for parking. It went for $475,000 in 2017. If I look north, I can see the other high-rise building that was purchased. I believe that was Diamond Tour Golf. It was purchased and tore down. That price was $412,500. Both of those buildings were torn down. Since then, by my math, almost $20 million has been spent in the Central Business District, buildings, road improvements. Buildings, road improvements, and I'm to believe that my building is worth ten to twenty percent of the average of what everything else down there has sold for. How do I know this? I provided a spreadsheet to the city of that deep dive, and we've received no response. So I will gladly provide them both again, and to all of you, and a copy of the certified market analysis. No problem.
City Attorney Rose?
Did you want to?
City Manager?
Go ahead and ask me.
Just, just a couple of quick little things. First is, the response was the, us having to go get the appraiser and getting a licensed appraiser who is trained and, you know, has an expertise in actually rendering what fair market opinion is instead of, you know, a deep dive. But more importantly, it was this past Thursday that we had an email from Mr. Sears' attorney that indicated that he was going to go out and get their own appraisal. And if we could withhold from filing a lawsuit to seek eminent domain in order to even go and file the lawsuit until we had that appraisal, which we agreed to, we said that we would do that, right? So if you authorized the action here tonight, we are not going to file a lawsuit until we actually receive, you know, the appraised, their appraisers, their, their promise to give us the appraiser's value. We do not want to actually file the lawsuit, right? We want to voluntarily negotiate. We asked them a long time ago for, you know, any appraised value that they had, and we offered to have a jointly agreed appraiser that we would pay for to go in there and do that. If there had been cooperation, that's the route we would have taken. That's not the route that we had to take. Instead, we had to go ahead and hire our own appraiser, who wasn't granted access to, you know, perform the whole building and inspect it, but nevertheless rendered his opinion, right? Regardless of all of that, we are still willing to negotiate for the fair market value. We don't want to have to go to the route of having to litigate this. And part of that negotiation was our willingness to agree to this extension to having their appraisal come in, you know, at the eleventh hour and tell us what it is. We are more than happy to hear that. We're more than happy to have Mr. Sears give us whatever information he has to say that it's the fair market value, and then we can consider that, you know, and in due course, we'll come back and do what we need to do and make our determination. But what's important for you tonight to strengthen our hand, if we want to acquire this property, is to actually give us the legal authority to file that action, that condemnation action, that we don't want to do, right? But to have that in our back pocket.
Alderman Sisada?
So I might not have read the, I may have missed this in the background, but I want to note that part of the purpose here is not simply related to making a parking lot. Part of the purpose is related to the size of the alleyway between the building in question, your building, sir, and the buildings next to it. So part of the issue is that dump trucks struggle to get through the space. And then we have those poles, you know, we have poles in the way and lots of things being hit in that very tight alleyway, so that is part of it. Nonetheless, you know, my question was going to be exactly the same, just when was that appraisal coming? And, you know, the internal access very well could make it so that the appraisal is higher. So having that internal access for our appraiser would be very helpful.
We have a motion still on the floor to recognize, to postpone from Alderman McAdams and Alderman Walker. Alderman Walker, your hand was up. Would you like to continue the discussion?
Well, yeah, I just, because I'm tired of hearing, and no disrespect, Carolyn, Alderman. I've been driving UPS trucks through that alley for twenty-five years, and it's the biggest UPS truck that we have at UPS, and I never came close to hitting a wire or a pole or anything. So, I mean, that, like, I can't hear that, you know, complaint, you know? As far as the extra parking, I really don't believe in that as well, because even with taking the pictures right here, there's parking right there. So, you know, I've never seen both lots filled up ever on Second Street or on Fourth Street. So I, yeah, there's just more work that I got to do with this. I believe, I'm not ready to, you know, give the city another toolbox or tool, another toolbox right now to do this. So I definitely second that, so.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. City Manager?
Just a couple of things, and then, then be happy to hear the council's decision. One of the other compelling reasons is, it is in the background, and that is the possibility of opening up at the back of the stores between Second and Third, which happened with some success on the north side of Lincoln Highway and also between First and Second. And if you talk to the businesses between Second and Third, many of whom have been here for thirty, forty years plus, that possibility has always been something that's been yearned for, but just never been something that was within their grasp financially, but with some help from the city would be. So I, I just want to clarify one thing. You weren't present at those early conversations, I was. And there's a witness to my, my comments that I gave earlier. I, I've never, I didn't open, Mr. Sears' brother knows that, with the idea that we were going to intimidate him. In fact, that was his thought. Why are we here? Was, was the comment. And I don't want to get into a he said, she said, but I just want to make something very clear, Mr. Sears. That's never been my approach. If that was my approach, we would have used the heavy hand of government to beggar you with building department code violations. Ever since I've been here, I've never done that. Always had my hand on that because I saw at first you were trying to do something, and then it stopped, and now you have a tenant, but now we have a larger community need. And my job is, on behalf of the council, to try to, to create options for solving those needs. Parking is one, and economic development is the other. And I've spent a lot of my time as city manager since the beginning of 2019 trying to deal with that. So it was never personal from the beginning. I never said, ever, we're going to come after you and make you pay. You know me, you've talked to me for a long time. People in this audience know that's not my style, that's not the way I operate. And it's just a shame that, in, in defense of his, his interests, that he's willing to try to shame a public official.
Yeah, to dovetail on Alderman Walker and Alderman Sisada. First, Mr. Sears, do you want to sell your property?
There will come a time I want to sell that property. Yes.
Not in the near future, though. You're more looking at, you would prefer longer term.
Yes, sir.
Reinvest, grow the value with everything good back going on in downtown.
My ladder-out strategy with all of my properties has been to improve each one and maximize its market value at the time it hits the market. But I have to take exception to Bill's comment, and I mean no disrespect. In our first meeting, I opened the meeting, and I said, I have the power to sell this building. I have the authority. I'm the only owner. If you have the authority to buy it, we can make a deal today. But whatever we do, I'd like to leave this meeting amicably. I was, I went to NIU, I lived here for seventeen years. I left because my wife took a job and drove for nine years to Wheaton. So I moved. I'm back here four to five days a week working on my buildings. So, yeah, I'll sell it. But I don't want to sell it now, but it was made clear to me in the first meeting and every correspondence since between the city's attorney and mine, that they will use eminent domain to take it if I don't come to an agreement. I don't think that's good faith.
And to Alderman Sisada's point, there's more to this story. You mentioned the power lines and whatnot. There's more of a cost than just this building if we wish to convert it to a parking lot. And discussion so far is that that would total about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which includes demolition of the building, burial of commed, power lines, et cetera, et cetera. The intent is, is that one hundred percent TIF eligible? What was the intent for funding?
Correct.
Okay. So I would also add that I, I do support your postponement, McAdams and Walker, because I think, again, if it's TIF, then is TIF for investment in redevelopment? In other words, we're looking to grow our EAV for our taxing bodies. We know we need to use, utilize TIF to, to remove blight or restore blight as well, but my challenge is, is that we're hearing from a property owner that certainly is well-invested in the city of DeKalb, along with the business owner that is operating in there currently, which, thank you for attending this evening. So I, I think we do have more to talk about. I understand the, the timing. I understand that this has really been driven by the property owners that are looking for more parking, the alleyway, easier deliveries, those kinds of things, I understand. They too are property owners like yourself. But how does everybody get together on your block and sort these things out together, I think, is the neighborly thing to do, and I'm not hearing that that's taken place. Alderman Larson?
I just want to, it's not about the vote or anything here, but there's been some words that people are using, and I think eminent domain is not taking. It's buying at fair market value. I just want to put that out there. And there have been other times that we have used this tool. When we put the second runway in at the airport, there was people's land, farmers didn't want to give it up, but we made, I wasn't on the council at the time, but the city made the decision as to what would be best for all forty-seven thousand people living here. And same with, I know, the future transportation location. Is, there's going to be a few people up there, they're like, not happy, it's on my block. Meta down on the south side of town, there are seven houses there that had gorgeous farmland, you know, sunsets, and they don't have it anymore. But that's, that's some of the hard decisions that we have to make. And so I don't want it to be like, yeah, we, we just sit here and we're just going to take. No, we look at what's good for the city, what's going to help more of the people, and try to compensate for your, your hard work. You, you bought and, and you made that building into something. And so I just want it to be like in the public that we're not taking. We're trying to buy at a fair market value, and just like we did at Hunter Hillcrest, Bill was out there with pickup trucks, with Andy and different people that's in the street department, helping people relocate along with cash money. So we want to try to make this as fair as we can for you, for you, and for the other forty thousand people who live in DeKalb.
Anything, they're from council on the postponement, otherwise we're going to call the roll. Alderman Walker, then Alderman Smith, then Alderman Sisada.
Well, just to clarify, well, you know, no disrespect, you know, Alderman, Alderman Larson, but if somebody wants what they want for their building, that you have somebody else coming in telling them, you know, well, listen, if I wanted five thousand dollars, if I have five thousand dollars and I went to somebody and was like, you know, I want to buy your car for this amount, no matter what you wanted for, this is what I wanted for, and somebody was made to tell that person that they had to get rid of it for the price that I wanted it for, to that person, that's taking, no matter how you look at it, so...
That's not how eminent, I'm sure...
But, but, I mean, it, it, it kind of is. I mean, I know you, everybody want to get into all these little legal things, but no, that's basically what it is. I mean, you know, cut and dry, that's basically what it is, and that's how I'm sure he feels. So I'm just wanting, you know, clear that up right there, because every, everybody doesn't always negotiate with the best intentions of everybody. And being an alderman, I'm starting to see that a lot more these days, so.
Alderman Smith?
Dan, thanks for your call today. Just to clarify, you told me today that property is on the market, and you already had two walkthroughs, correct?
Correct.
So it is for sale. So those two potential buyers could buy and tear it down, which would displace your tenant?
That's correct, but I'd have to agree to that contract.
Correct. But you still had, I guess where I'm going, that's on the table.
And again, as honest as I can be with you, that property hit the market. For me to test someone else's opinion other than mine and my team.
Okay.
I provided a spreadsheet, I have a CMA, I'm willing to provide it, I'm getting an appraisal.
I just want people to understand that it is on the market. I want people to truly understand that you're a property, not that, you know, we might want to buy it or whatever, but it is actually on the market.
That's correct. It typically takes three hundred and sixty days to successfully sell something in the Central Business District of a commercial building.
Thank you. Alderman Sisada?
I was actually going to note the same thing that, you know, you asked him, do you want to sell it? But it is, it is on the market, and actually, it's listed as contingent right now on the market.
There, there is somebody we've, that contract's going nowhere.
Okay.
But just to clarify then, you're, you're saying that if you do sell it, a part of the contract would be not to allow that new owner to tear it down?
Well, the city would have, the city would have to allow that, and, and I've always understood that should that contract go through, and again, not going to happen. You assume the leases that are in place.
Right.
Part, part of a private party transaction is you have to assume those leases. I can't displace her or you. If I buy the house you live in or the building you live in, I can't displace you just because I bought it. You have a lease.
Right, so my follow-up question, I guess, to that is, so you have it under contract, which is actually a good sign of fair market value for it. You probably can't tell us how much it's under contract for, can you?
No, I cannot.
Okay. But it is under contract.
Nor can my agent.
But that's a great step in the right direction, possibly.
Correct.
And that also would be evidence of, possible evidence of the value of it when you get it appraised, so.
Correct.
On top of the business owner located at that location now, that's a unique location, so in other words, we say that, well, they could just move to another location. Well, that, that next location may not be as uniquely successful as this particular location, so I think that's also something to keep in mind. With the motion in a second to postpone on the floor, Ruth, please call the roll.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
No.
Smith?
No.
Perkins?
No.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes for three. So postponement, Alderman McAdams, you had mentioned a, a couple of meetings or a couple of weeks, what were you looking at?
At least the next meeting.
Okay.
Some, some additional time so that, so cooler heads can prevail.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager, all good with that direction?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And for those that spoke out, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is number four, ordinance two zero two-three dash zero two-seven, amending the City of DeKalb fiscal year-end December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three budget. Can I have a motion brought to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager?
Sorry. Staff comic.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, so this, this is not hearsay, this is the real deal. We've got a, a budget which is, as we have for a lot of years, been respected, which is your, it's your authority, and we have been following through and staying within the, the fund guidelines. On occasion, council actions are made with, with our conversation that will push us beyond what was originally budgeted. And as you see here tonight, there are a couple instances where street maintenance, for instance, bids came in and they were higher, but we decided to proceed. The council knew what it was doing at the time, and we said, we'll come back with some budget amendments to clean up the budget. budget amendments to clean up the budget. Adequate funds are there, and all of these cases, which are enumerated for you, it's a responsible thing to do, the actions which precipitated the imbalance were all voted on by you, so what we're just doing is the cleanup here on the FY 23 budget, and we recommend your approval.
Council?
Questions, comments? Hearing none? All right, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Aye.
Ordinance 2023-027 is in pass on first reading. I take a motion waived second reading?
Sub move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker, I think it was. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Aye.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-027. Moving on to reports and communications, Alderwoman Larson, you want to?
My gosh, I got to go first. Well, my night started off great because I was able to see the new fire truck was parked out front, so that's always a great addition to our city. We've got great staff, we need great equipment. And the only other thing I want to talk about is I went to the Pride Festival and Parade for the third year in a row, and it's getting bigger each year. And I know DeKalb has a lot of things we can say are, we got to work on, but as we do that walk every year, and the people going by honking and waving and showing support, I'm just, I just think what a great town we live in, that people can just be who they are and what they are and what they believe and be free to be it. And I think that's great, so, great town.
Awesome. Alderman Perkins?
Had a great Flag Day celebration at the Elks Lodge just a little while back, and I encourage anyone to take a drive-by. We've got some, there's a flag for each branch of the, of service, and it's going to be, going to be lit most of the time with red, white, and blue lights. It's a pretty impressive display. So great celebration, encourage anyone to take a drive-by. There are bricks available for dedication things as well.
Awesome. Alderman Verbic?
Everyone have a very safe and happy Fourth of July, and I will remind everyone that fireworks are illegal in the state of Illinois. There will be a number of public displays for all of you to enjoy, but as dry as it is out in the city of DeKalb, please, 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 not this year. Thank you.
Or any year. Alderman Walker?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
A quick shout-out to Public Works and Andy Rye. On Wednesday, there was a discussion on a Facebook account, kind of a private discussion about trees that, in my ward, on Bush and at Glidden. I texted Andy at 4:45 that evening. The next morning, I received the text back from Andy at 7:00 a.m., and he had addressed the tree issue to the satisfaction of all of the residents by noon. And it's that kind of service that people in the city should expect from their public servants and from their city staff, but it's always nice to acknowledge when a very professional job is done. So hats off to them.
Awesome. Alderman Smith?
Alderman Larson, I got to sit in the fire truck, so. Very nice truck.
We see who the favorite is, we're going to say.
It was, somebody did get a picture, by the way, but other than that, no report.
All right. Alderman Sisada?
I wanted to address one of the public comments at the very beginning, which brought up the Annie Glidden North revitalization plan's goal of supporting a tenants association. I just wanted to note that years ago, I was involved with the tenants association. I want to note that there is a Facebook page called the DeKalb Tenant Association, and I want to note that previously NIU was involved with supporting the DeKalb Tenant Association through their nonprofit and government studies major. So there was a lot of support coming from the university, a lot of support coming from the city, and a lot of support coming from the tenants association. However, I feel like these things ebb and flow sometimes, and this has sort of, the interest of tenants, you know, comes and goes, and when the issues are bigger and hotter, the interest rises. So this group still exists on Facebook, so it's out there for people to join and become a part of and to try to get together. I don't know that they have meetings regularly, but there is a group.
Awesome. For me, I'll tag on to what Alderman Perkins was saying about Flag Day. It is really cool, the Elks dedicated that land. It is a beautiful, well-done, professional memorial. Going there was just awesome to see everyone that came out, and I just commend you guys for donating the land to do that, and I have to commend Michael Embry for helping drive all the fundraising required. And there were a lot of volunteers that donated concrete, time, money to be able to pull that off. So that's a great addition to an entry point of our community, so thank you for that. I also met with Dan Kenny, I think most of you met with Dan Kenny, so I met with him, but also with Paul Stoddard. He's a member of the Board of Directors, I think he's their treasurer, and it was nice to finally meet with Dan and a board member, so we had a good conversation. Also, Alderman Larson, yeah, the Pride Parade rocked. I came up there when it started. I thought it was just going to be the parade kind of thing. The amount of vendors that were out there, the place was packed, beer was flowing, music's playing. No, everyone was just having an absolutely wonderful time. It was a, it was a well-done event, and I agree, the amount of support out there was just phenomenal, so I enjoyed myself immensely, and it did make me proud as well of our town. Also called together, I don't remember if that was, well, it was just last week, a liquor summit, so we're looking at making some modifications to our liquor code, and I wanted to make sure I got as many liquor license holders as possible in a room. I got to thank the Egyptian Theater for allowing us to host it there. We had, I don't know, 30, Ruth, 40? I don't know. There was a pretty good crowd there. Lots of great ideas, lots of feedback, which was awesome. So it was just good, before we start dabbling in something, to get feedback of those that any change we make might impact. So that was wonderful, and more to come on that. Bill and I are both part of an executive director search for a new executive director for the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, so continue to participate in that, and we'll be doing a round of interviews here coming up. Street Department, we met with the Street Department regarding road closures. We've had a lot this year, which is really cool, that there's enough events and enough things people want to do downtown, but Andy's requesting, hey, next year, can we put a little guardrails on it? And mostly because there isn't any standard on who do we allow to close. So to make sure we're treating everyone equally, we'll probably start working on, hey, you want to close a road downtown DeKalb? Here's the process you go through, here's the things that the city is expecting in the process. So I thought that was a great idea. And of course, our city engineer Zach was there with some awesome signage ideas that no one had even thought of before, so typical Zach, bringing new ideas to the floor. Also met with Alderman Walker, myself, and City Manager Nicholas with a national grocery store chain CEO, continuing that conversation, which was really good regarding the L, so that continues to move along. And we also met with our monthly meeting with Northern Illinois University, where we discuss a variety of issues, but it's just nice to be able to set aside time with the president and her leadership team, City Manager and myself, to really just kind of discuss about what current issues are going on in the community and things that we might work on jointly between the two organizations. And really, the primary goal is to keep an open dialogue and open communication and a relationship there, and I think it's been strong ever since I've been mayor, so it's really good to see that Northern Illinois University and the city of DeKalb have such a solid relationship for dialogue. City Manager?
No report.
All right. With that, moving on to N, executive session, we have none, so moving on to O, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Naye, same sign. We adjourn.
Hard to tell.